On Zoom and then we have property owner, Mr. Stein. We'll call the order. Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to, sorry for the delay on my part. We're going to call us meeting today about, I guess, some health department issues with some properties. So without further ado, I'm going to let, I guess, Michelle, she'll describe what we're doing here.
So we are having a hearing today on two different properties. Both property owners are with us via Zoom. So we have Mr. Stein camp and Debbie, and Debbie is the New Frankfurt property owner. And then Mr. Stein camp is the Lover's Lane property owner.
So let's do one property at a time.
One property at a time? Okay.
I'm having trouble here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll talk, usually people don't have trouble hearing me, but I'll, I'll talk louder.
We get tired of hearing her tell.
All right, we'll do the New Frankfurt property first, if that's okay. I know you guys are here for that one. So the property is 2880 New Frankfurt, just as a refresh on some recent timelines. Debbie, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Perfect, thank you. So we're going to talk about your property first. So initially, we, recently, we've mailed out a letter on April 23rd of this year, returned on May 3rd, was served by the sheriff on June 20th, on June 23rd. She spoke with attorneys at Houston Thompson and Lewis that she had received the notice and that I believe you were going to plan on cleaning it up. Is that what you told Ms. Dinsford?
Yes, and I'm sorry, we haven't got to cleaning it up yet. We have seven kids, so trying to get out there to get it cleaned up has been a problem. We would have had the house pour down a long time ago, but somebody at the courthouse, this lady, she was an older, short lady, a couple of years ago, told me that my house was considered a national landmark and I couldn't tear it down because where it used to be is school. And so I didn't tear it down years ago, but it finally fell down. So we're trying to get it cleaned up now, but it is not cleaned up. The house is there.
Yes, yes. And so those are the pictures that I was going to just present to you guys, that the property has collapsed, which in the ordinance that we're using, which is 2008 dash of seven, it states in here that under section 14, if it's decayed or the foundation or is partially or completely collapsed. So that was kind of what we can fall under as the unsafe building definition in the ordinance. It's your guys' ordinance as the commissioners, so it's kind of your decision and questions that you want to ask the property owner on next steps for this, or any questions you have for me?
I guess I have, I have a question. I know, and this is Mike Jones speaking. I know, it sounds to me like you were served on the 20th of June, 23rd. You, someone acknowledged that they received that, that notice. Is there, I guess my question, is there, is there intentions to clean up the house that has fell in the, in the area and around the grounds there? And I know, and I know you.
We are trying to clean it up so that way we can actually put something else out there. We can't put anything else out there until the house is done. So we are trying to clean it up so we can put something out there so I can live on the property instead of living in town because like I live in almost seven kids and I would much rather be out there in the country. But of course, you know, you know, as well as I do, it is unsafe out there right now. So we have to wait until we get it cleaned up. And we have been working on it a little bit, but my husband is a corrections officer at a prison in Kentucky and he works five days a week. And then I'm home with our kids, so it's kind of hard for us to get out there and do it. But we're trying to get it cleaned up. I've got a little bit of help now. My aunt is helping me try to get it cleaned up, but she's fixed. So we're doing what we can, it's just we don't have the resources that we need.
Do you, I guess, I guess because we're now into a hearing on such property, is, is, I guess, I would ask the obvious question, is there a timeline of when you can have that cleaned up?
I'm not sure. I mean, if you guys want to give me a timeline to try to get it done by then, you know, that would help me out more. I'm, I'm not very good with like saying I could do it in this amount of time. But if you give me a timeline, like, okay, I know I have to get it done in this amount of time. If that makes sense, but.
Hang on, so we're going to, we're going to ask our attorney a question here about what you just described, so.
So part of the cleanup process is that it be done in a particular fashion by somebody who has the expertise and ability to make the dwelling and or structure, whether it's fallen down or not, I'd say that still falls under the statute or the ordinance definition of uninhabitable structure.
Unsafe.
Unsafe structure, I'm sorry. You know, it specifically says, and I think there was a notification under section 818, and Tim Brunner, is that? So you've already issued a, you've already done an inspection of the property and made a determination that it is unsafe. And there's some specific references to the ordinance and the numbers in here, but 18 has, has been so damaged by fire, wind, earthquake, or flood, or has become so dilapidated or deteriorated so as to become an attractive nuisance to children or freely accessible to persons for the purpose of committing unlawful acts. So the attractive nuisance piece and has become so dilapidated, I would say whether or not the structure is falling down or not, it still falls under the ordinance definition of what can be determined as an unsafe structure. In terms of the timeframe, I think the commissioner, you would be committed to allow for a period of, whatever it is, I think, but that is essentially, if I'm understanding it correctly, the health department doesn't, we don't get to this point unless there's been that discussion prior to this.
Debbie, are you still there?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure you can hear me when I'm talking.
I can hear you a little bit. I'm, I'm home with my kids and so they're just running everywhere and I'm trying to.
Oh, that's fine. I get that.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, no. No, you're perfectly fine. I have a question here and, and, and the attorney may tell me something different or the two other commissioners may agree or disagree or whatever. At this point, if you, if you're having trouble, you know, having the time, resources, whatever, to clean this up, by statute, and somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we, if we deem it that we, we need to have it cleaned up and we contract somebody to clean it up, do we not add that to their tax, to your tax?
Yes.
Payment at the end, at the end of the year.
So what you're saying is you guys can help us get it cleaned up and then it'll just be added on to my taxes for us to have to pay more taxes on it?
That's correct.
Yeah, we'd just put it, put it as a tax bill.
And I'm not going to lose my property.
Say that again.
I'm not going to lose my property. That's really where you're.
Right.
This property was my mom's property and my mom died when I was 15, so I don't want to lose it.
Well, as long as you, as, as long as you continue to pay your taxes, nothing will happen. So, so what we're saying is, we would, and I'm going to let the attorney talk here in a second, but I think what I'm saying, and I may get over the road here, but what I'm saying is that you don't have the means or the time to do that, what, I think what happens in this process is that we would clean it up and that, that payment or whatever it costs to clean it up would go on to your tax roll and you would be responsible for that at the end of the year or when, when you pay taxes next.
That, that, Ms. Hallifield, is it? Okay, so.
Can you hear him?
My last name's Deaton, actually, I'm married now. I had the property, it was Hallifield.
Can you, can you hear him?
Can you hear me?
You hear the attorney speaking?
That's very soft spoken.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, so I just want to make it real clear though, and I don't want everybody to be under the impression, that process is correct, that the payment would go on to the tax bill. You said you were worried about losing the property. That's not a concern necessary for today, but we don't know what the cost of cleanup would be. Okay, so the taxes, do we?
We have an estimate.
Okay, what's the estimate?
Because that was something I figured would come up. And so I had someone that does that go by. He didn't get on the property because I told him we don't have any authority to be on there. So it was a drive-by and he set an estimate to get it cleaned up, 24,000 dollars.
Okay, so that.
That's not, okay, that's not that bad.
That amount would go on to the tax bill. I just want to make it real clear that when that happens, if it were not paid, you could run the risk of losing the property at tax stage later on.
Yes.
I just want to make that clear so that there's not, you don't feel as if you've.
Been misled.
Assented to something or been misled in any way, and the commissioners understand their role too, so that they're not doing something that maybe they don't.
And she needs to understand that's just an estimate. It could be six thousand or something.
Because he didn't get out and walk around the property and your property is kind of wooded now and there's other things there. He included a little mobile trailer that's been sitting there for whatever, a couple of things, kind of clean it up. But again, that's an estimate, it's not a quote.
Okay.
So my question is, I guess, is there any way that it could be spread out in two years? Or to, or to pay the taxes?
As long as I just pay our property taxes with our tax check that we get, you know, like our refund check, it should be fine because we should have enough to cover that, even if it is four or six thousand. And then as long as I pay it, you know, when we get our tax check, that would be before the May increment for when it's due in May, it should be good. I should be able, that shouldn't be a problem at all.
I don't think it'd be up to us anyway.
At that point, it would go to.
You're here to just decide today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, would, I guess, is that something you would entertain then?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So I guess.
So the, so the only thing that is basically, this, this hearing has been conducted pursuant to state statute and your local ordinance. The only thing that the commissioners would be deciding today would be to affirm the health department's finding that the building was unsafe. That's all you would be doing and I would ask that Tammy reflect that decision, whatever it be, to affirm or deny in the minutes of this meeting. And for this jury specifically.
Yes, Senator John, you got anything you want to say?
No, I don't want to let you lose your property so if we can work with her, I'd rather do that.
So I guess I'm going to entertain a motion to deem the property unsafe or uninhabitable and, and to move the health department to move forward with whatever the process they need to do at that.
So it's actually you guys now.
It's, yeah, it's the ordinance says commissioners do.
Yes.
This, this would be, I don't have the printout, but this is what was, do you have the continuous enforcement order?
I don't, sorry.
So let me get, look at this.
Debbie, I mean, we're, here's what I think we're going to do, and I mean, I, I think we're, we're going to vote on here in a second. I don't know if this, you know, sounds like we're at the end of this process, so. What we're going to do is we're probably going to vote and I think all three commissioners are in agreement that we don't want you to lose your property and that we'll, we'll get a, I assume that we're going to hire somebody to go clean the property to our satisfaction and then once that happens, we'll get with the auditor and she'll be able to add that to your tax burden.
I got a question. There's actually someone living there now.
Yeah, that's actually what I was going to say too. That's my aunt and my dad, they're staying here in a little corner shed.
And I don't know who it is or, you know, what's going to be the situation. When you send somebody out there to clean it up, you know what I mean? He's got a big dog, I don't know that much.
So Debbie, can you just say again who's living in the property and where on the property they're living?
Yes, I am living in Scottsburg at 190 North Second Street Apartment B. I live in town in Scottsburg at the old halfway house.
And then who's living there on the property?
Property is my aunt, which is my mom's sister, and then my dad. They are both staying out there in like one of those little corner shed things that older people like to stay in and she's living, you know, with the generator and staying out there and that's the one that is trying to clean it up. She has, you know, done some cleanup on it, but like I said, she is 60. But she is aware, you know, that the health department would have came out. I told her before, you told me that, and then I will let her know what is going on with everything and she will not see a problem. She'll stay out of the way whenever you guys need her to deal.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, I think if we probably looked into that situation, it's probably not the best, you know, living in a shed with probably no running water and septic is not going to be up to health code anyways.
Okay, so I'm going to have to tell her she can't stay there right now until it has running water?
I would probably look for a new living situation for them, yes.
Debbie, I, this is Mike Jones again. I'm just telling you that under most conditions, that would not be a viable living condition for someone because you, every, every home, trailer, camper, whatever, has to have electricity to it, has to have running water and has to have septic. And if they, if they don't have that, as a permanent resident or a semi-permanent resident, then that, that would probably go against a lot of, a lot of policies and ordinances and. And, and quite honestly, it would also fall back in probably to the health department because it's probably not safe for those people to even be living in those type of situations.
Then that's unhealthy because you want to look at, you know, they're probably not disposing of their waste property.
That falls under uninhabitable, the state rule there, no water, no sand.
But that's a totally different situation than this.
That's different, that just, you know, happened to be brought up, but yeah, I think you'll, you'll solve two problems if they move out.
Because that's going to, that's going to create a problem and, and all it would take, well, now we know about it, so it's not, it's not going to take somebody else. But I mean, it would take a neighbor, somebody driving by and going, hey, they don't have a septic or whatever hooked up or what, running water, whatever.
My neighbors are good for that kind of stuff too. They like to call and complain about their property all the time. So yeah, I can see that happening.
I get, I get, I get that, but, but also as a, as.
It's an eyesore, so again, they don't.
And it's just, it's not, it's technically uninhabitable if they don't have running water. So at the end of the day, like, it's, you know, it is what it is.
I get that, but what.
Well, there's a well on the property. I mean, it's not running water, but she has a sub pump and she has a generator. She has electric, but she's not.
If they're still out there, that's going to affect you guys.
Like electric box and she has water through a sub pump.
Yeah, I get that.
Whoever you guys contracted to do that.
I get that, so.
It'd be better if they were gone.
But anyway, that's, that's a separate, that's a.
We're there, so, again, yeah, I will say something, I will.
Okay.
That's a totally separate issue from what we're determining today. But that, I will tell you that in advance, that is going to be an issue.
Okay.
You guys will find us somebody to come correct me?
So actually you guys do that.
I know, but I don't.
Well, it was Tom, it was Tommy Fleener. Tommy does a bunch of them in Washington County. He's done some in Scott County. If you want to get other quotes, fine.
I don't know who does.
If you guys know somebody.
Jeff Coons does it.
I would like to get other quotes.
Yeah, Jeff.
It'd be nice to keep it local.
Jeff Coons gets it.
It'd be nice to keep it Scott County.
Yeah.
Johnny Abbott might do it.
Johnny might do it. I would like to get a quote.
Yeah.
I, I don't want her to pay more than what she has to.
Okay.
All right, Debbie, we're waiting for our attorney. He's a little slow today.
It's not his fault. He got.
So here's the continuous.
I'm just joking, he was getting some papers printed off.
Here's the continuous enforcement order that you would be considering.
All right, now we have our paperwork in front of us and this is how, this is what we're going to vote on, so. So I'm going to read this and, and then the commissioners will, will vote on this, so. And you say you're now a Debbie Deaton officially?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, sorry.
Okay.
I have seven girls, so I say ma'am all the time, I'm so sorry.
Oh, you're fine. It's continuous enforcement's order to Debbie Hallifield, Johnny Deaton, 2880 North New Frankfurt Road, Austin, Indiana, 47102.
It's actually Scottsburg.
It's Scottsburg.
It's a Scottsburg address, it's not Austin.
Okay, we'll, we'll.
We got to change it.
We'll change that. Says, please notice that the Scott County Commissioners in Indiana has held a public hearing on the first day of September 2021 and decided to affirm the concerning unsafe building that was completed on March 18th, 2021 by the environmentalist, environmental health specialist, Tim Brunner. The Scott County Commissioners find that all interested parties were provided via notice via certified mail through the USPS, via publications or by the sheriff. That the commissioners find the environmental health specialist findings concerning conditions at said real estate are accurate and that the property is unsafe and unsafe premise. That based on the findings that the commission, commissioners affirmed that environmental health specialist notice concerning unsafe building. This order is issued by the compliance and abatement and remains in full force and effect on the subject property without further requirements to seek additional compliance and abatement authority or orders for the same or similar violations. Furthermore, this order authorizes specific ongoing compliance and enforcement activities if the property requires reinspection or additional periodic abatement. This order can enforce and, can be enforced, including assessment of fees and costs without the need for additional hearing or notice. Finally, this order authorizes the commissioners to assess and collect ongoing costs for continuous enforcement order activities from a party that is subject to the enforcement authority's order. Ordered by the Scott County Commissioners this first day of September 2021. So I guess I'm.
So before we put a motion on, we've done a record title search, we've done title search, right?
Transitioned to the child search.
Okay, and that came back as?
No mortgages.
No mortgages and the owners were?
Wow, I think, I mean, she didn't have any issues with the, I can't remember exactly what she said.
Okay. The factual findings relative to the property, you all submitted the pictures that show what the property actually looks like and you've done an inspection. You've been, you've done an inspection, determined what you fully see. And can you talk a little bit about that as it relates to your findings under the ordinance?
Well, to be honest, it started in 17, 2017, complaints from the neighbors. I went out there, I took pictures, you don't have them, but I've got them in my file and it was dilapidated. I mean, there's no way it can be repaired. I think there's no possible way. And each two years since then, I've probably got complaints. I sent letters to the commissioners and I think Bob Houston's gotten them and what Bob's done, I don't know. But anyway, this year, you know, new set of commissioners, new, you know, attorney, they told me try again, so I did and that's where we got it to this point. And actually, I think at the beginning of the year, when I was out there in February, it was still standing. She may know, but then it's completely collapsed now and there was nobody living.
It's still standing, I think it fell in like May.
Okay. And there was nobody on the property at the beginning of the year, but since then, in the last month or two, they've moved in this little, any other whatever. And so, and again, that's a separate issue, but in yet, it's still the same for the health department. Somebody shouldn't be living there because like I said, it's unsanitary. There's no running water, no septic, no nothing, yeah. But, yeah, all those things are documented with pictures and sent letters. We've done the health department's job, so now then it's up to you guys to decide what you want to do.
And Ms., Ms. Deaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Deaton, I'm sorry. Would the, would you have any disagreement about those kind of observations about what the property looks like, the state of it at this time?
Absolutely not. I, I know it is horrible. It is absolutely horrible. It is so horrible, honestly.
I think you guys can, at this point, move forward with, you have facts in front of you to support the, the finding under the ordinance and it's your own decision at this point what you'd like to do.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to agree to the continuous enforcement order that we have in front of us on this property on 2880 North New Frankfurt Road. And I'm going to correct that, that's Scottsburg, Indiana, so.
And I'll make that motion, I want to make that strictly to continue the enforcement, is that what we're doing?
Well, actually, no, we're going, if, if, whatever we do here is the end of it. There's going to, we're going to be hiring somebody to go clean it up and.
That will be my motion that we hire somebody. I take it we're going to do that with estimates. So you guys go out and clean the mess up and, and that's my motion and she's got to get the family off there.
It would just be an approval of the language that's recited by.
That's my motion.
Debbie, this is Randy Jones. I second that motion and we will get estimates so it makes sure that you're not getting the highest bill possible. You're getting the lowest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? My second.
All right, the motions been made by John, seconded by Randy, and I'll make that unanimous. So we're going to, we'll reach out and get, you know, probably three estimates to, to come out and, and clean up your property. And at that point, the bill will be sent to us and then we'll add it to your tax bill at the end of the year. So are you, are you fine with that, Ms. Deaton?
Yes.
All right, well, if we're all in agreement, then I appreciate your time today and look forward to you building a nice home out there one day.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Stein camp, are you still with us?
So if we can get signatures on that?
Once we, I think we have to edit it.
We have to change it because it's the date.
We'll get a change notice and then.
Mason, are you still on? Can you hear us?
And Tammy, if you could just record in a minute that this action is taken.
Hang on just a second, let me, I think he's muted, but I think I can unmute him.
The last time we had this, Jeff Coons did some. He's got the excavator and of course, Thomas, you know, has got the dumpsters, so I get a quote from him. Or John, you might have John did.
I don't know if the Zooms at the jail have the capacity to talk or not. Because I can't unmute him.
But it does have to go to approve landfill, yeah.
Mr. Stein camp, can you hear us?
If he can't talk, is that an issue? Oh, there we go.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, there we go. Perfect. All right, so, Ms., do you want me to just ask him if you can make comments on this property or?
So if you would just kind of outline the findings of the health department.
Okay, so just to go over like we did with the other property, just a brief timeline. Initial letter was sent to Mr. Stein camp this year of April 22nd. And then he responded on May 1st indicating that he was incarcerated and unable to do anything with the property, but upon his release, he would attend to the situation. Today, he remains incarcerated. No changes have been made to the property. So, and again, this falls under our unsafe building ordinance.
I guess my question with this property, and actually I was at that property when it was on fire, so. But my question is, was there a permit issued for a rebuild or?
This is Marty Randall, administrative assistant with the Scott County Plan Commission. There has been no permits issued. Our building inspector, Ben Petty, has been out to the property several times and he actually found Mr. Stein camp on the property at one time and told Mr. Stein camp that he would have to tear down what he had rebuilt because he had built his own trusses. And that is no longer allowed in the state of Indiana. If you do build a trust, it has to be certified by an engineer. That was, that process was never undertaken by Mr. Stein camp. And so Mr. Petty asked me to write to Mr. Stein camp and I did so. And then it led into the health department as well because of the condition of the house being unsafe as well as some trash from the fire being left on the property.
Well, Mike, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to know because first of all, I wanted to know if there was a permit issued for the construction part of it.
No, sir.
So, okay.
Same thing, kind of what we outlined with the other property. Well, this one is, like you said, it burned down. Public nuisance, I know there's been some issues with law enforcement out there. Partially decaying or collapsed, so there's multiple things in our unsafe building definitions that it could fall under.
Mr. Stein camp, can you hear me?
Uh, that way, sir.
All right, well, I'm sorry, I'll talk up a little bit. What's, I know your situation right now, but what's, what is your intentions, you know, for the property, I guess, in the future?
Um, right now, I'm trying to sell it. I've got a couple people arrested, and this negotiations are slowing here, and it's that's pretty much what I'm trying to do, sell the property, and
So he's interested in selling it?
So your, your, your intentions are to sell the property as is and, uh, just technically for the land, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Well, this is a little different story for, for the fact that there is a house up and, and, um, and, uh, I guess, I guess, since you said you, you're in negotiations with someone wanting to buy the property, I mean, uh, is there any timetable with that as far as when that process could be, uh, you know, at the end date?
Uh, probably three months, six months, something like that, maybe.
Do you have a purchase agreement currently, or just communications?
No, we're still negotiating on five.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
I got a question, how, how long has this been going on? I mean
Well, you were there at Burnout, I wasn't
I've had a fire or two since then.
No.
I mean, it's been over, over a year, hasn't it?
Oh, it's been longer than that, yeah.
I think, I think the Plan Commission got involved in twenty nineteen.
So two years?
Yeah, it's been a couple of years. Cuz actually, it was on the ground totally, and then it started going back up, so. Uh, it's a little different animal for the fact that, you know, uh, if he's wanting to sell the property, and the property he's wanting to sell, he's wanting to sell as is, and somebody's gonna clean the property and do something different with it, that's, that's a totally different situation. Uh, I guess, the way the ordinance reads, or our, our ordinances are, is that, um, I'd be concerned if, if we're adding, I guess we could go out there and clean it to the ground and, and say, you know, you're, you can either pay us to clean it up, like we did the last lady or, and, and add it to the tax bill at the end, and then if he sells the property, you can clean that up with, with the sale of the property, so.
My only concern would be that whoever purchases the property, like Zach was saying, like, it's not up to the standard of what we want it to be, and then we're here in six months again.
Well, right now, it's, it's unoccupied, it's, it's not a complete structure.
And it's not coated.
So you're, you could have animals, you could have, you know, some
People.
People. You know, people squatting and everything else, so. Um, Mr. Steinkamp, uh, would you, would you be opposed for us to clean the property? Add it to your tax bill at the end of the year? And if you sell the property in three months, six months, or whenever you sell it, that, you know, you could use those funds to, to finalize your tax burden, you know, with the county and, and your property be, uh, I guess, clean for sale, and, and there wouldn't be an issue going forward. Would you be opposed to that, or in favor of that, or what?
Uh, did you say you'd get it to the end of the year?
No, what, actually, what we're, what we're talking about is, is cleaning the property up, hiring, hiring a contractor to go out and clean the property up to the satisfaction of the health department. And at that point, we would take whatever that cost of that would be, we would add it to your tax, uh, your property taxes at the end of the year. And that next, next installment, you would be responsible for that, that, the cost of that, uh,
Or whoever
The cost of, uh, or, uh, if you're selling it, and that person, depending on what kind of negotiations you had, they'd be responsible for the taxes, but I mean, it depends on how you negotiate whatever the seller of your property is. But, but at this point, we, at this point, I, I guess I'll just be blunt. We need to clean it up, and it needs to, so that we don't have rodents, or animals, or, or law enforcement having issues with, with situations going on on that property, so. Um, so, it's, I'm asking you, do you wanna do it that a way, or how do you wanna handle it? I know, I know you're in a situation that you can't physically do it, so, uh, I'm just asking you, uh, how you wanna handle it.
Well, um, I don't know, honestly. Did you give us some time to think about it, or?
Let me ask a question, um, is
This is our attorney speaking now.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any factual evidence, anything that you wanna put in front of the commissioners at this point that would contradict the health department's finding that the property itself is in violation of the ordinance that's been noticed specifically, that the building has been so damaged by fire, uh, or has become so dilapidated or deteriorated so as to become an attractive nuisance to children or freely accessible to persons for the purpose of committing unlawful acts?
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
He's asking if you want to, um, present any facts or disagree with what we are saying that, which is the building is unsafe, um,
Or it's not up to code.
Yeah, or not up to code based on its current conditions. Do you have any argument against that, or any statement you would like to make to the commissioners about your property?
Uh, like I say, I'm trying to sell it, and the owner is aware that it, that the condit- uh, potential buyer is aware of the condition of the house, and he was gonna fix that situation, but and that's, that I like to say, I mean, if you have to tear it down, you have to, you know, um, I would rather not, but that's, you know, pretty much up to you guys, I guess, I mean, I don't, I can't do anything about it right now, so.
No, you recommend that we need to
Then Johnny doesn't sort of take care of it, so if I can get it sold, then they can
He's the one that's complaining about the house, I'm complaining about all the garbage, all the rubbish. It's all waste, so, but it's combination.
In addition, the Plan Commission received information that there were other people residing on the property, uh, in vehicles and/or campers, which of course is not allowed by our zoning ordinance.
Speaking of, speaking of that, Mr. Steinkamp, have you a lot, I mean, I guess, have you gave people permission to occupy your property while?
I have come out there and took care of it, yes, sir.
Okay.
They won't, you know, if they wanted to stay out there, I didn't have a problem with it.
Okay. All right, um.
I don't, I think we're on our choices here.
I think
So, 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 we'll be real clear about, we, we've got all the dates you talked about earlier, when the notices went out.
Mhm.
They reference specifically what the health department has found related to
And pictures taken, again.
And you all have the pictures with you that you can submit to the commissioners? And do you have, we've done a title search, you've done a title search?
Yes, initiative title search, and yep, it was no more outstanding mortgages on the property.
Okay. So at this point, is your ultimatum?
The question I'm gonna ask is the same we asked the last group, do you have an idea what's gonna cost to clean it up?
Well, my same guy, uh, said the solid waste would be about three thousand dollars, and the, uh, structure would be about fifteen hundred.
So about forty-five hundred, guesstimate. Did you hear that, Mr. Steinkamp?
Uh, yeah, I thought he said like forty-five hundred, please let me think that.
And that's a guesstimate, it could be more.
Or less.
Or less, yeah. We do have a party here that, I guess, or neighbors or something, but I don't know if it's appro- is it appropriate for them to have?
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, I think, you know
Just acknowledge
You're talking about
If you could state, if you could state your name.
Dennisine.
State your name and your address.
Thirty-eight sixty-one East Lover's Lane.
Okay, yeah.
When you're talking about cleaning up everything that was burnt?
Yes, now that little shed behind there, no.
Yeah.
The little shed, but the, the house, and there, and then that big pile of rubbish over all that he saw, yes. But now the shed in the back, no.
Okay.
That one part.
Well, like I say, I, I mowed my property around it, and I say, well, it stinks, it's burnt, you know.
Okay, all right.
And I wouldn't clean everything that's burnt down, that's piled up against that house.
Yes, top, that's on the porch and stuff.
Anything would help.
So when you, if it gets cleaned up, you want it done right, in other words?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
And if I had, you know, if I could get it out, it's clean enough, you know.
Well, you want to negotiate.
Yeah. If I could get in contact with him, I would.
If you can, well, maybe. Uh, anyway, I think at this point, uh, I'm gonna entertain the same motion we had before.
Yeah, I think Zach probably wants you to read it again.
Yeah. So.
All right, Mr. Steinkamp, um, Mr. Jones is gonna read the order that, um, for your property that they're gonna be voting on.
And what we're, what we're voting on is, is, uh, to accept our, or to agree with our ordinances that we have stating that this property fits, fits that, uh, that, that
Unsafe.
Yeah, the unsafe, uh, unsafe building, so. Uh, I'll read it again, uh, continuous enforcement order, Mason Mike Steinkamp, three seven oh five East Lover's Lane, Scottsburg, Indiana, four seven one seven oh. Uh, please notice that the Scott County Commissioners, Indiana, has held a public hearing on the first of September twenty twenty one and decide to affirm the notice concerning unsafe building that was completed on March eighteenth twenty twenty one by the environmental health specialist, Tambruna. The Scott County Commissioners find that all in, interested parties were provided notice via certified mail via, through the USPS via publication or by the sheriff. The commissioners, that the commissioners find that the environmental health specialist findings concerning the condition at the said property, said real estate property are accurate and the property is an unsafe premise. That based on these findings, that the commissioners affirm the environmental health specialist notice concerning unsafe building. This order is issued by compliance or abatement and remains in full force and effect on this subject property without further nut, or requirements to seek additional compliance and abatement authority or orders for the same or similar violations. Furthermore, this order authorizes specific ongoing compliance and enforcement activities if a property requires reinspection or additional periodic abatement. This order can be enforced, including assessments of fees and costs without the need for additional notice or hearing. Uh, finally, this is an order, authorizes commissioners to assess and collect ongoing costs for continuous enforcement order activities from any party that is subject to the enforcement authority's order. Ordered by the Scott County Commissioners this first day of September twenty twenty one. So what we're, what we're, uh, saying here, Mr. Steinkamp, is that we're gonna, we're gonna order, um, that, uh, we, uh, we'll go get three estimates like we did on the, the property prior to yours, and that we would, uh, uh, go with the lowest, uh, bid to have your property cleaned up to the satisfaction of the health department. And that cost of that, and I think it was an estimate of forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. Uh, and, and that's an estimate, but that would be placed onto your property taxes to be, uh, paid by you or a new homeowner, whoever would, you would deal with, so. So I guess
Just to be real clear for the minutes, it sounds like there's been pretty much uncontested evidence that the building has burned to the ground and is dilapidated. And that's a, a factual finding, and it is the basis for this order.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this continuous enforcement order.
I will make that motion to, uh, just like the last group came in, that we will take the, uh, get somebody to tear it down and do the cleanup on it.
I'll, I'll second that motion, uh, under the condition that we also do the same thing and find, uh, take three bids and, uh, take the cheapest one.
Yep. Our, uh, motion is made by John, seconded by Randy, and I'll make that unanimous, so, so, so be it.
You guys will be the ultimate, the person to go out and look at it and make sure it's cleaned up right.
Yeah. With that, uh, I guess, you got anything else? With that, I'm gonna close this portion of this, of this hearing, um, with the health department, and, uh, so be adjourned, so I guess I'll ask for a motion.
Make the motion adjourned.
John makes a motion, Randy seconds, so I'll make that unanimous, so we're adjourned from the hearing.
I'll shut that off.
Thank you, Mr. Steinkamp.